Okay, welcome everyone. Before we start our meeting, we will have a prayer from Councilmember Kimna followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you and pray for the agenda set before us here today. We ask that you give us the wisdom and the guidance to face these issues and make decisions that are best for serving you and those living here in the city of Jefferson. We continue to seek you for wisdom and guidance as we leave this city. Thank you for the many blessings you have given us, and we pray that our eyes stay fixed on your glory and not become distracted by things that do not come from you. May your hand be upon all those that protect and serve this city as well as their families, and peace be with all those that are struggling at this present time. We lift up all requests that we have in our hearts. We ask all these in your name. Amen.
Welcome everyone to the Monday, May 3rd City Council Meeting. We do have a virtual option to join by WebEx. If you go on JeffersonCityMo.gov, you can click the link. Call-in participation is available. The meeting number is 1-878-625143, and the meeting password is 1234. Okay, so with that, I will call the meeting to order, and Mrs. Donaldson, roll call please.
Fitzwater?
Present.
Hensley?
Present.
Kimna?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Present.
Spicer?
Present.
Boat?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. I would like to welcome Ms. Kristi Campbell, Director of the Cole County Health Department, to give us our pandemic update. Welcome, Kristi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's nice to meet some of the new council members we haven't had a chance to meet yet. So I am Kristi Campbell, the Director of the Cole County Health Department. I'm happy to be here in person tonight. Sorry I couldn't make it last week. A lot of family obligations on Monday nights. So I wanted to give a short update tonight. I was looking at the positive cases that we have had reported to us in the last seven days. Looks like there's been about 19 people test positive in the last seven days. The hospitals are reporting very low numbers, usually zero to three COVID inpatients at a time. Very low, it's really good. Our state data is showing that about 35.4% of Cole County residents have initiated vaccinations. I would estimate that actual number is higher because there are some facilities that are getting their vaccine allocation from the federal pharmacy allocation, and they might not be reporting all of that data to the state's database ShowMeVax. And that covidvaccinemo.gov website that we get our data from might not be reflective of all the numbers, so I anticipate our vaccination rate in Cole County is actually higher than that. And then with our number of positive infections we've had, I estimate that our community immunity, I hate to say herd immunity, our community immunity is really higher than that. So we're really showing great numbers here, great response to the vaccine. We like to say that the only thing that has stayed the same through this whole pandemic has changed. So with our vaccine strategies, we have gone through a myriad of strategies trying to get the most vaccines to people that are interested. So at first, it was all through the healthcare facilities, the health department, we had clinics, and then, as you know, we did some National Guard-supported mass vaccination events. We held different events at The Link, which was a great facility to use for those vaccination events, and we were able to vaccinate, you know, over 2,000 people each time we had events at The Link. It was a great facility, great support by the National Guard, great support by all of our partners, good events. Then the strategy from the National Guard and DHS has sort of changed to that central vaccination site that we have started at the Capitol Mall. So it's on the south side of the Mall, and it was really trying to maximize the location, the National Guard support, all the community partners. And then they also have the adaptable vaccine teams, which we're able to send into businesses or communities to do small vaccination events. So those are still available through the end of May if anyone would like to host an event at their facility. We also have the Community Health Center that has a mobile unit. They went recently, this last week, to the Joshua House and did an event there. The other community events, like JCMG did the Building Community Bridges event two Saturdays ago and offered vaccines there. And we also have the Homebound who are getting vaccines delivered right to their home by our EMS service. So lots of ways that people can get vaccine if they're interested. The community vaccination site is still open at the Mall on Mondays through Wednesdays, 9:00 to 3:30. Thursdays will be open until 6:00. For those that are interested, you can register at that covidvaccinemo.gov website, or call the hotline at 877-435-8411, or just walk in. And then for the Homebound, Aging Best has a line that they can call, 800-369-5211, if they need a vaccine delivered to their home. So just a quick update, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you for that update. Kristi, you have been very good to keep us updated every single meeting about the pandemic because it is still an important topic for us to keep on top of the communication. We did recently send out the flyer with the updated information about the Mall Vaccination Site. We've sent that to our council members, so be sure to share that as well, that people know how easy it is to get a vaccination here in Cole County and Jefferson City, and they don't even need to be a resident, as long as they live in Missouri, anyone can get that here.
Correct.
So we appreciate that. And I know one question that came up. We are renewing our emergency proclamation, and the three things included are virtual meetings, allowing extra signage for businesses to assist with the pandemic, and then also masks at meetings at City Hall if they're in a meeting. So I would like your input. I'm going to guess your answer maybe, if you can maintain distance, that that would not be necessary if people can maintain the space in between them, but what would be your thoughts if we decide to not renew that portion?
I think that all along we've said it was a recommendation, not a mandate, and if the spacing can be maintained, and if people feel comfortable not wearing a mask, then we wouldn't object to that change in your advisory or your proclamation.
We appreciate that. Does council have any specific questions for Ms. Campbell? Once again, we appreciate all of your effort in taking the time to come, and we will continue to get the word out about how easy that is. And we know as changes come about with days of operation and hours of operation, which they already have this week by extending them on Thursdays, so certainly we want to let people know to be on top of that every week to watch what's going on. And we will do a press briefing this week on Wednesday.
Wednesday at 3:00.
At 3:00, so people can get the latest and greatest. We try to do that every week so that people can always tune in to whatever information may be out in our community. So, yes. Councilman Spicer?
First of all, yeah, I think you guys have done a great job. I think, you know, it's time for, you know, everybody, we want to move forward and try to, you guys did the right thing with the vaccines and stuff. I mean, it's people's choice if they want to take it or they don't want to take it. Really, it's people's choice if they want to wear a mask or they don't want to wear a mask. You know, I just wanted to compliment you guys. Great job, council and the mayor, forward. Just think it's time to move forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Try to get back to some kind of...
I totally agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we've had a lot of great communication with Kristi and your staff at the Health Department. I know the different vaccination events that you've had, they've really gone above and beyond and making it very accommodating, and I think we as the elected officials get a lot of those comments about how smooth those clinics are running, but we certainly want to do that. Without you, it wouldn't happen. It's really something that's under Cole County and the Health Department, but we do hear those comments, so we appreciate that, and thank you for reiterating that, Councilman Spicer.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
You too. Item B, Mr. Gary Plummer is the new President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. He's actually going to come to our next meeting, so, but I do want to mention that we are glad to have him on board. You probably will remember him that he was in Jefferson City before, so we're looking forward to welcoming him officially at the next council meeting. So we will move on to item C. We have Mr. John Landwehr, Mayor John Landwehr, to announce the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament on June 4th, and everybody has one at their seat, and there are extras there on the counter. So welcome, Mayor Landwehr.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for this invitation, and thank you for the time you've been in office, being a really a constant support for this event. I know you're not a golfer, but you're an avid supporter. I'm not a golfer either, but I go pretend.
You claim to be, no.
But thank you so much for, you know, every year you're out there, you provide prizes, and you lend your excitement to this event. Fifteen years is a long time. We started this back when Oak Hills was beginning to do some really significant improvements on the course, and we wanted to highlight those. And our Kiwanis Club in Jefferson City, one of the oldest, not quite the oldest, but one of the oldest service clubs in Jefferson City, celebrating our 100th anniversary this year. And we're also celebrating our 15th year for hosting the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. You have the information in front of you. It's June 4th, 11:00 AM registration, it's $100 per player. All proceeds go to Kiwanis' local youth efforts. So once we pay for some minimal green fees and some food for you, every penny goes to local youth events. And, you know, some good players show up, and sometimes they get in the money, but it's really a fun tournament. Even if you're not much of a golfer like me, you can show up and have a good time. And what I'd encourage you to do is, I think there could be seven teams that could be generated from the city. And we're gonna start a tradition, and that is, we're gonna have a little traveling trophy in each department that fields a team, and a team has to be comprised of one current employee or office holder, and one former employee or office holder. You can't bring a ringer in, okay? So it has to be a current office holder, like Mark Schreiber could invite someone who's a former city councilperson, right? So we'd like to have seven teams. Police, and these are just two-person teams. So police, fire, I counted seven, maybe there are more, police, fire, oh, and on the police team, you play for free, chief, you play for free if David Williams will play in later hosen. Got that? It's on my tab, if Williams shows up with later hosen. He's gotta play all 18 rounds. All right. Police, fire, Parks really needs to sponsor a team, just two-person team. Elected officials, come on, elected officials, let's get out there. Planning and code enforcement, Public Works, I've lost track of your departments, you know what I mean though. Administration, Ryan Moaman, all lawyers play golf, don't they? All right, okay.
They think they can, I don't know.
And in addition to the traveling trophy, I haven't mentioned this to the mayor, but it's my treat, the mayor and I will take the winning city team to lunch, okay? So you can talk about anything you want, right, Mayor?
Right.
And it's all under the dome, right? You can say whatever you want, attorney-client privilege, you can talk about the city administrator, say whatever you want, right?
There you go.
At our lunch. But we'll treat lunch for the winning city team. So let's get seven teams, six or seven teams from the city. It's June 4th, it's Friday afternoon, 11:00 registration and lunch, 12:00 shotgun start. Thanks again for your support.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Landwehr? Well, the information is all here, so you can email mark.mccarter1@gmail.com for people who are tuning in. Also, there's a phone number you can call, 816-304-17, I'm sorry, 1273. So please register for that. We would love to have everybody participate. So with that, we are going to also get a picture so that we can get this out on social media with the mayor, so.
Props, all right. We have booty, we have prizes, good.
It's a lot of elements. All right. That's good.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we will see you all June 4th, and at the look of that little putt, I think John needs to cheer, needs a little practice, but he left, so we can say that, right? I love it that he's kept that tradition going all these years, so. Thank you, JJ. And also, is there anything that you would like to mention going on at Oak Hills or anything with Parks, JJ, while you kind of have the floor with Oak Hills Golf Course?
No, just excited again to host the Mayor's Tournament, and please come out and see us at Oak Hills. The staff's been working hard to improve things and keep things maintained. Drop-in play tournaments, we have youth and adult lessons and leagues and just about everything out there, so come out and see us.
Great, looking forward to it. Thank you, JJ, and for the props too. Item five, we have no public hearings. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have in front of you our list of council liaison appointments, so I will entertain a motion to approve that slate of appointments.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. We have none this evening. Item eight, announcements by mayor and council and staff. We have our four standing committees that are on our website, JeffersonCityMo.gov. You can find a calendar of those. Do any of our four standing committees have announcements? Any upcoming meetings? Councilwoman Wiseman?
The Administration Committee has our next meeting at 7:30 AM. We're doing a virtual meeting this day.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, Public Works meets on Thursday, the 13th, 7:30 AM.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements? And I will give my announcements. We had the law enforcement memorial ceremony at the Capitol on Saturday. I know they had a candlelight ceremony the evening before on Friday, but on Saturday we, that was held at the Capitol, and we had a good representation from Jefferson City Police Department, and appreciate them being there, and it was a very honorable service and ceremony to really think about how important those have given the ultimate sacrifice for our communities. So that was on Saturday. Also, want to recognize Local Government Week is this week, so I do have a proclamation that we will read for that. And then also on your calendar, tomorrow, Tuesday, May 4th, at the Bicentennial Bridge, that Union Pacific will be making an announcement for a donation and their support of the Bicentennial Bridge, and that is tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the Capitol, at the area of the entrance of the Bicentennial Bridge, or inside the rotunda if inclement weather. Does council have any other announcements? Okay, with that, I would like to recognize Public Service Recognition Week, and I will read this proclamation that reads, "Whereas, every day residents of the city of Jefferson and people throughout the city directly benefit from the dedication and commitment of city of Jefferson employees, those public servants and unsung heroes that keep Jefferson City running. And whereas, city of Jefferson employees represent numerous occupations and trades, possess a broad array of skills and expertise, and put these to use with efficiency and integrity for everyone in our city. And whereas, while elected officials come and go, city of Jefferson employees offer continuity of service across years and election cycles, and are essential to the smooth functioning of our city over time. And whereas, city of Jefferson employees risk their safety and dedicate their lives in service to the people of Jefferson City. And whereas, we owe a substantial debt of gratitude to city of Jefferson employees. Now therefore, I carry turgid of the city of the Jefferson, sorry, do hereby proclaim May 2nd until May 8th, 2021, to be our city Public Service Recognition Week. And I encourage all residents to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of the city of Jefferson employees, and the extent to which we all rely upon and benefit from their service." So I would like to give a round of applause and thank all of our city employees. We appreciate what they do, couldn't do it without them on a daily basis. I know as elected officials, we appreciate them so much and how they assist us and do all of such a variety of jobs to help our citizens and help our city. So with that, I have a big thank you, but would like to turn it over to City Administrator Kroll in case he would like to add anything.
Well, thank you on behalf of all the employees for the recognition and support. We have a lot of different events going on throughout the week, and I think on Wednesday we'll be serving lunch to city employees, so if you're in the area, you can stop by and enjoy, help us do that as well. And I just want to say that there's a lot of employees that have chosen, all the employees have chosen, to make their contribution to the community by working through the city, and we thank them for choosing the city of Jefferson to be able to do that. So thank you for the support and appreciation for the recognition.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Item nine, we have our Lincoln University Student Representative update, Mr. Stacy Landis.
How you guys doing? So for Lincoln University, this is finals week for all seniors. Next week is finals week for the freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and move out is from May 11th to May 14th, and graduation will be May 15th. So right now, Lincoln is in its last phases, getting ready to move students out and enjoy our summers. That's pretty much all.
Well, good luck with finals, and we enjoyed having you. Will you be here for the summer?
Yes, I will be here. So I'll be here at the summer program for Lincoln University, so I'll be here.
Wonderful. Well then, we'd love to continue to have you at our council meetings and giving updates.
Absolutely.
And also, congratulations on the 100th anniversary of the renaming from Lincoln Institute to Lincoln University.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Landis? Okay, thank you. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions, and at this time, we do have signed up Mr. Jack Deacon to speak on Bill 2021 Number 3. Welcome, and we're glad to have a member of our city boards and commissions, and we appreciate your time that you dedicate to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack Deacon, 236 South Bluff, 65101. I heard earlier that Councilman Fitzwater is gonna put the on the informal calendar? If that's correct, then I decline to speak on the subject now. I'll wait till later.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome to. We will have, just so you know as well, in case if you're not here at the end, there will be a work session Monday, May 24th at 5:30.
Okay.
That will have more information about that topic.
I would like to speak before the vote, though.
Okay, thank you. Item 11, consent agenda, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, Bills Introduced, 2021, 4.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by Addition of Yield Signs on Cedar Way.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Sidearm went before the Traffic and Transportation Commission, but it's addition of a yield signs, a clerk indicated. It's basically at the alleyway that serves the parking area of employment security. Any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Wiseman?
Thank you. Mr. Marash, just on this one, and then the other two, I'm just gonna ask about all three of them. Did we get any public feedback on any of those?
A couple of them were requested by the public, the first two, I believe. Miller Street was city staff initiated, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
2021, 5.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by Addition of a Stop Sign on Tanman Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, another transportation traffic issue item. This would add the stop sign as the clerk indicated, and currently match what's already located at the site, so just be updating the code.
Any questions? 2021, 6.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J, Parking Prohibited by the Modification of East Miller Street, 700 Block.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk indicated this would modify the no parking on the street, basically flip sides of the street. Currently, there's no parking on the south side and parking on the north side, so this would flip that. And on the south side, there's a couple in-home daycares, several residents, church, etc. And so people tend to park on that side of the street anyway, so we're flipping this. Streets wide enough for parking on one side, and this is the main street our buses utilize to go to the transfer station.
Any questions? 2021, 7.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, Vacating and Discontinuing a Sanitary Sewer and Drainage Easement on the property addressed as 282 Madelins Park Circle in the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This would vacate a small portion of sanitary sewer easement and drainage easement. Madelins Park subdivision, recently, the owner instructed a new detached garage area there, and later found out it was built over a sanitary sewer easement. He escalated that and found that you could still maintain the sewer that's in place there, and to clear up the title work for them, we vacated a portion of this.
Any questions? 2021, 8.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map, the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 14.32 acres located in the 3700 block of West Edgewood Drive from CO-C2-R-A-1 to RU to PUD Planned Unit Development, approving a preliminary PUD plan for the property and approving the final subdivision plot of Americare subdivision.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The clerk did cover that. There are three parts to it, and that, back up to the zoning. There's about four zoning districts, CO, C2, a little bit of RS, and some rural conservation zoning. The zoning is desired to go to a planned unit development. This location is about halfway between Wildwood and the South Country Club or Fairgrounds, and it is about 14 acres. The PUD plan, this is a preliminary PUD plan, the overall plan includes an assisted living facility that is, let's see, that is at the north part of the property, adjacent to Edgewood. There's two entrances up there, about 300 feet apart. It's 30 units, has kitchen, dining facilities, exercise rooms, movie theater, typical amenities for an assisted living facility. To the south, they're calling these things cottages, but they're basically 10 units, 10 buildings, that would be two to three units each. Altogether, this facility that is more independent living would be about 55 units. There's also a clubhouse, sort of in the center right there, that also would have amenities for the folks living in the independent living facilities. There is a planned greenway grading for a trail in the future. The total square footage of this facility is about 66,900 square feet. The actual building itself is gonna be a combination of stone veneer, brick, lap siding, several different building materials. It looks very nice in the next slide there, a rendering. So they've put a lot of thought into this facility. Their existing facility is up there off of Truman Boulevard, and that would still be used by them. This would be additional space. They may change the use of their previous facility, or their existing facility. And then also, of importance, is they're gonna have plenty of parking. Required parking is 70 spaces, they have about 108. The final part of this is the site plan, final subdivision plot, excuse me. This is a one-track-or-one-parceled subdivision. This is a one-track or one parcel subdivision. There is a power line going through the property which they are going to relocate. About 30%, 31% of the area will be covered with impervious surface, leaving about 69%, which is quite a lot of area that can absorb moisture. Since stormwater is an issue in the community, I also want to share that they have designed this facility to accommodate 100-year storm, and 99% of the water will be retained, probably using the jargon wrong, but will flow into dry detention basins on the property. So it will not be a hindrance to the stormwater issue. All utilities are on the facilities. No traffic study is required, does not meet, is not warranted. And let's see, there is a very good narrative on pages 18 to 22 in your packet on this item that goes into much greater detail about the amenities of what this facility will look like. It's coming through the Planning and Zoning Commission with the recommendation for approval. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? 2021, number nine.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, implementing traffic schedule for restricted-access streets and release certain access deed restrictions for a portion of West Edgewood Drive.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This bill is related to the previous bill, but operates a little bit independently as well. So in the process of going through the PUD and plat for the Americare development, it was discovered that in the deed that made the city acquire West Edgewood as part of the real estate tract that the Americare facility is being developed on, there were restrictions to access to Edgewood, which were included as part of that deed. And going through the process, it was particularly found by the title company and in looking to issue a title opinion for Americor, that the access planned for the site by Americare did not comply with the deed restrictions that were set forth in the deed for West Edgewood Drive. And so essentially, in order for Americor to receive a title opinion, a favorable title opinion that would allow issuance of a title policy, essentially, those deed restrictions needed to get released and/or modified to match the access that is being proposed as part of the PUD and final subdivision plat. So the PUD and final subdivision plat were fine with staff at its location and willing to accommodate that, but there was no real way to modify those deed restrictions. Essentially, you had to get rid of them. And so staff was a little hesitant to release those deed restrictions because in other portions of West Edgewood, staff believed that those access restrictions are still warranted. So the idea that was brought up really accomplishes two things. The first thing it does, it provides for the access that staff believes is appropriate for a portion of West Edgewood, you know, allowing for Americare to develop the way they proposed, which is, you know, fine by city staff, but also releasing the deed restrictions so that way Americare can get their title policy and actually develop the property. So that's kind of the first goal, the immediate goal. The second thing that it does, what we have found is that we have these deed restrictions for limited-access roadways sprinkled in deeds all over town. And we know about them because they're in some engineer or some title company personnel or someone's head, and they just know about them. And, you know, we happened upon them, and that's not a very good way to do business, and it's particularly not friendly for developers who are looking to find pretty immediate information about the land that they're developing. So what we're proposing to do is to start pulling out these deed restrictions out of the deeds and putting them into a traffic schedule for restricted-access roadways. So that way, they're easily accessible to city staff, and the development community has those restricted-access locations readily available to them. So when they're looking to develop a property, they can take a look at that schedule and determine whether or not their property is affected by a restricted-access regulation. And so we think that's a cleaner way to do business and to provide information to the development community, start getting them out of the deeds, which are really kind of buried and can just pop up on someone at the very last minute, as happened in this particular case with the Americor facility. So that is the long and the short of it, fairly technical and complicated, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moulman? Thank you for that explanation. 2021, 10.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the City of Jefferson by rezoning 0.22 acres located at 500 East Capitol Avenue from MU1, mixed-use to PUD Planned Unit Development, and approving a preliminary PUD plan for the property.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The property I believe everybody's familiar with is known as Ivy Terrace. It's on the corner of Jackson and Capitol Avenue. It is on the National Register. It is in the area where the Housing Authority has been working with the city, and this is one of the properties that they have worked out a redevelopment activity with the current property owners. They want to rezone the property to PUD in order to have their event center and also retail activities, both of which are going to be focusing on wedding events and things like that. They want to go to PUD because mixed-use does not allow that. You can see the zoning around there is pretty much all the mixed-use, except for a couple blocks away. And you also see a NC up there on the map, which indicates that it is part of the Capitol Avenue Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. So with that, from the next slide here, they really don't plan to modify the exterior of the building at all. They've actually done extensive research and have identified the original paint color. The changes on the site would actually deal with putting in what you kind of see in a red brick right there, is a red brick sidewalk that connects basically an existing driveway, it may not be in the best condition, to the front of the building, and also have three removable ramps, so it could be ADA compliant. That is the major impact. They are going to accommodate parking by on-street parking, and they've worked out a negotiation with a local property owner that can provide the parking for them. They don't plan on doing any extensive types of landscaping. Lighting would be typical residential lighting, and there's already signage requirements in MU1 that they will follow. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Glad to see that moving forward with the property redevelopment there. 2021, 11.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction contract with Parking Lot Maintenance LLC in a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the purpose of constructing the apron maintenance's project for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. I think the clerk explained it pretty well, reading the title there, but the project is $4,115. The city, this is a grant project awarded through MoDOT, but the city's portion would be $38,590, and that would come from the absent capital improvement sales tax for airport projects and with the company Parking Lot Maintenance, and they're going to do apron repairs at the airport.
Any questions? Thank you. 2021, 12.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GBH Builders Incorporated of Jefferson City, Missouri, renovate and reconstruct in addition to fire station for 820 Ellis Boulevard.
Chief Schofield.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and appreciate the opportunity to bring this to council. We've been working for a number of years to bring a proposal forward. That's what this represents, a contract. It's a mixture of both maintenance, some deferred maintenance, and then some reconstruction. Just a brief synopsis of some of the things that will be included in that project. Again, this is for fire station number four. Would be a hardened storm shelter area, which doubles as a fitness area for fitness equipment. A bathroom that has public access and is ADA compliant, toilet facility. Attritions in the bunk room that would ensure some additional privacy for firefighters, male and female. Designated company officer workspace. Updated electrical service. It's compatible with some of the future expansion and possibly a solar option. Decontamination area for the bunker gear and for contamination of our personnel to keep their gear clean and prevent cross-contamination. Some additional storage, maintenance area, and then also a secure vest to be worn at the entrance. So this building is about 50 years old, and it was kind of a series of three buildings that were all built after the city passed a bond issue back in 1966. And so the other two facilities were sold and then built in different locations. And one reason that we were making this recommendation for this property is it is a very good location to share that property with parks as our adjoining neighbors there, Oak Hills Golf Course. Strategically, it's in a good place, has good access to roadways, covers a large portion of the city, and is able to respond quickly to a lot of locations. So we believe that this type of project can extend the life of this facility, open for about 15 to 20 years into the future. Believe that that's a good investment for the community. So we did bid it with a couple different alternates and made some recommendations for those alternates. That's in the packet. We do also have here with us tonight two people I want to identify. One is Assistant Chief Matt Bowden, is kind of our facilities and maintenance point of contact for the fire department, has been instrumental in this design and engineering process, as well as a lot of the staff at Station 4, as the end-users have been involved for the last two years, as we've discussed this internally. And then Randy Allen from Architects Alliance is our design and engineering consultant. And it's also important to note that Architects Alliance would also, if this moves forward, also be part of the construction management of the project, bringing it to completion. And just a brief note on the timeline, it is a project that would require us to be out of the facility, the personnel and some of the equipment would have to be relocated. There's a couple of different strategies that we have for that, but in all those cases, we would be outside of the building. And so because of that, we are somewhat seasonally dependent, weather. So that's part of the strategy in doing that during the spring, summer, and fall months. So we had a great discussion at our Public Safety Committee meeting last Thursday. Many of you were there. I tried to send out some additional information from that meeting to all of the council, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Thank you, Chief Schofield. Any questions? And I think that we've had a request to suspend the rules, but before that, I may call on Councilman Spencer, who has proposed an amendment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like to propose that we add $6,000 to this project for the replacement of the original windows that were in Station 4, for the bunk room. I think that will enhance the project and make sure we have that extended service life of the facility that we're remodeling. I second that.
So we've had a motion and second to amend adding the windows. Chief Schofield, anything to add on that?
Yeah, I would just add that was alternate number four in your bid packet, and that is to replace the east wall windows. The bid amount that would change would be $5,940 to the overall contract price. So, you know, we definitely support that. That is appreciated certainly for the project and the overall scope of the project.
For ease of math, I just rounded up.
Great. All right. So we've had a motion and second for the amendment, so at this time, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we will take up the bill as amended, and we've had a request to suspend the rules. Are there any objections? Seeing none, we will take up 2021, 12.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with GBH Builders Incorporated of Jefferson City, Missouri, renovate and construct in addition to fire station for 820 Ellis Boulevard.
Any further discussion, deliberation? Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Bill passes. And again, thank you for the work on that. I want to thank Mr. Randy Allen for the presentation at Public Safety Committee and for your continued work on this project. And thank you also, Chief Bowden, for your work on it as well. So thank you all and your teams for what you've done to get this to this point. Thank you. Bill's pending, 2021, two.
In ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for assistance with operating expenses for the air traffic control tower at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of November 1, 2020 through October 31, 2021.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this is a grant agreement, pay the city up to $50,000 to reimburse this for 50% of the costs associated with having the airport tower. The grant agreement's always a little behind just due to the nature of dealing with the feds and MoDOT getting the agreement in place. So it started last November, run through this November. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Bill passes. 2021, three.
In ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2020/2021 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the parking fund.
Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this bill would have appropriated funds to purchase property for a future parking garage. Last meeting, there was some discussion about this, and as a result, the city's going to have a work session, I guess I can announce it, May 24th here in this room, to go over the project in detail. Assume, I think this is going to be put on the informal calendars, the discussion has been.
Councilman Fitzwater.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Marash. Yes, with all the discussion and the work session coming up, I'd like to put it on the informal calendar tonight.
Thank you. And that work session is at 5:30 PM on Monday, May 24th, in this room. Any other questions or comments? Item 14, we have nothing, well, that is just now going on the informal, nothing on the current informal. Item 15, Resolutions, RS 2021, one.
A resolution extending an emergency declaration for the proclamations thereunder until June 7th, 2021.
Mr. Moulman.
Thank you. This resolution would extend the mayor's current emergency declaration and three emergency proclamations through June 7th of 2021. The three emergency proclamations that would be extended by approving this resolution include proclamation that allows for additional temporary signs for businesses to help with wayfaring for different protocols related to the COVID pandemic, curbside and such. The next proclamation that would be extended allows for electronic participation at all city meetings. Without this proclamation, electronic participation by members is limited to just a few certain boards and commissions. And the final emergency proclamation that will be extended by this resolution is the resolution that requires masks at all city public meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Moulman, and we had some discussion at the pre-meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to amend the resolution to have the additional temporary signs and electronic participation in removing the mask, the third item there. So is there a motion to amend that?
Yes, I would motion to move to amend the proclamation to remove the...
temporary signs and electronic participation in removing the mask, the third item there. So is there a motion to amend that?
Yes, I would, I would motion to move to amend the proclamation to remove the mask.
Okay, Councilman Lester has made the motion. We have a second from Councilman Hensley. Any further discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
I appreciate the amendment. I'd like to speak against the amendment. I'd, I'd like to see the whole resolution just disappear. I think we have reached the useful life of this, these three pieces of the resolution. I think the community has been cooperative. We're watching cities around us do the same thing across the state and I think it's time just to let the entire issue go. So I don't, I don't know how we do it now that there's an amendment out there, but there are provisions within this resolution that we're not holding people accountable for. So I think we just need to let them expire. I mean, we've done a great job in this city and that would be my comment.
Okay, I know that the two items that would be still in place, the additional temporary signs though, usually that's a benefit for businesses, so I would be a little hesitant to remove that if there are businesses out there that are utilizing some services where they use those additional signs. Also, now the electronic participation, I know that while this, I had originally anticipated this entire thing would go away at our next month's meeting, but I know that we currently have an electronic meeting for admin on Wednesday, so I guess I would turn over to Ryan to ask how Councilman Fitzwater's proposal would affect the current meetings that are currently planned.
So the, the previous April resolution expires tomorrow. So the authorization to, for example, conduct the administration meeting electronically on Wednesday, that authority would disappear and it would need to be.
So I guess with posting 24 hours, that would be what, 7:30 tomorrow morning?
We'd have a busy evening.
So I'm not sure if the urgency would be necessary. I'm not trying to talk you out of that, but with it already being planned, I would certainly leave that up to council. We have the chair of administration, Councilman Wiseman?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to go ahead and leave the virtual option in place. I, I want to address that with the admin committee before we release that. I think it's an important asset for the city, especially because we have some committees that just haven't been able to meet regularly until the virtual option was available. I think we've had more participation, participation in some of those meetings and I, I think that virtual option is a really good option and I think we need to talk about it in admin before we, before we move forward. And I think we can discuss that before next month if necessary.
So was that a, was that a motion, Councilman Fitzwater? I'm sorry, or just a discussion point that you brought up?
I was just speaking against the amendment and then just, if the amendment went down, just having the entire thing expire. I would just make the comment on committees of, we had to go virtual so we could get participation, then maybe that raises additional questions. And I know why we had to do it through the pandemic, but I hope we don't have to do that moving forward to get participation on our committees.
Further discussion from council? So what we currently have is the resolution, a motion to amend with the two, only the two items, virtual and additional signage. So this time, we will vote on the amendment and then we'll vote on the resolution as amended. So on the amendment itself, roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vought?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
The amendment passes, so we'll take up Resolution 2021 number one as amended. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Vought?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Motion passes and so we will meet, we will stay in here for closed session. Thank you all for being here for our guests and.